This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. You did the recording before I even thought of it. Thank you. Give it another minute or two.
People have gotten very punctual since the pandemic. Like meetings start right on time.
Well, they all, to me, they always should. I mean, even when we were in person, they always got there fifteen to ten minutes. Ten minutes to me, I'd be like, oh, I'm really cutting it close.
Speak for yourself, Cindy. Definitely remember like running in off my bike at like, you know, ten past.
I wasn't going to remind anybody of people who come at the last minute, but I always get like, I have to be here at right then and there. All right, so, um, I am going to, we're gonna let Ben in, and I am going to close, um, public speak, because obviously, uh, nobody, welcome, Ben. Um, we just closed public speak, so we are going to go on to our tiny little meeting and our two agenda items. So first is the Mountain View Handbook, which everybody, um, had time now to peek at, so that's good. Um, so do we have comments and concerns and questions? Sam and then Ben.
I have, um, no concerns. I, uh, I appreciate, I feel like it's, um, I was gonna compare it to what we got a few nights ago, but I didn't have the time. Um, but it, it looks good. I really like how all of the, um, the names are in there, like the current staff, um, as a parent. I found that to be very helpful, like for my own purposes, uh, right now, which was great. Um, the only thing I, I would suggest, there's two, two suggestions I had, but they're, neither of them are game changers. One is just, uh, one thing that I find really helpful is on our website, it'll say like, in order to email somebody, you do like, this is, this is the format of our emails, and it would just be good to have that in the handbook somewhere. Um, and if somebody saw it and I missed it, uh, I apologize, but I, I didn't notice it. And then the other thing is, um, I just noticed under the, with the staff listings, we have a lot of, um, student support programs and like special education programs that are acronyms that are then, and this is like just how all schools work now, that are then pronounced as words. So like we have SOAR and we have RISE and we might have LEAP, or maybe LEAP is something else. In any case, I was just wondering if there's a way, and this doesn't need to go in this handbook right now, but can we at some point like spell those out and define them a little bit? Just because like as a, as a parent of a kid with a disability, a lot of times I'll go to meetings and they'll be like, okay, well, he's in SOAR right now, but he's gonna be moving to SSP, or he's in SOAR, but we're, he's in RISE for this time. And I, I don't know what any of that stuff means, and so I, um, I was just wondering if we could maybe spell that out somewhere, and this might be the right document to do that eventually. I don't think we would need to do it right now.
Sure. I, I'm not, I'm not sure that it's appropriate to put it as part of this handbook, but Heather Dean, our social emotional learning coordinator, she oversees our specialized programs. She has worked really hard, um, to develop program descriptions for all of those, um, special programs as well as and criteria, um, so she's going to continue, continue, um, working as, um, hopefully Antigone starts, and, um, we're, um, we will hopefully not think that, um, all of those, the words, and SOAR, that they could be acronyms for.
Jill, you're breaking up.
Most of the time they are not, and, um, of them, oops.
Jill, could you try?
Yeah. I don't, I don't really know what they say.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
So Jill, yeah, that's, now you're better. Yes, now that you got to do your video.
Yeah, that's a good idea, Jill, do the video.
You were breaking up constantly, so that's good.
I'm so sorry. I'm, I'm in a hotel room, and so I, I apologize.
It's okay. It's much better now. It's much better now.
Can you hear me clearly now?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize. I'm so sorry. Um, no, I, I, I said, um, Sam, thank, thank you for bringing that up. And, um, the format of the email is something that we can easily add, um, to this document, um, along with our contact information. Um, in terms of the specialized programs, I don't know if you heard anything I said. Was it all broken up? Oh, okay.
All I heard was they're not actually, which I, uh, which I.
They were named before my time, um, but our social emotional coordinator, Heather Dean, um, has worked with, um, our team, um, as well as the former special ed director, Sarah Mochack, to develop, um, program descriptions and entrance and exit criteria for the programs. That is about to be published and it will be shared with the larger community, so, um, more, more to come on that.
Awesome. It's good to hear. Thank you.
Um, Ben?
Hey, how's it going? Um, I had a couple of thoughts, and you know, feel free to just tell me what you think, and I'm happy to converse about it. Um, but one was, uh, the, the, and, and actually, Sam, you mentioned that there was a list of, of names in the handbook. I don't know if I'm looking at a different one, but I didn't.
You might be looking at the one from the other day, because there was one, the first one that was sent was sent via that link that, um,
Yeah.
And then there's, there was another one sent this morning. It was a PDF.
And that is, that is with the agenda?
Yeah.
So, um.
There's two links that I see. I see them via handbook, and then I see an agenda.
Yeah, so if you look on, um, let me tell you what page it is. Hold on.
I got it open. I'm ready.
Yeah, it's, it's towards the beginning. Sorry, I I feel like whenever I have to navigate my home computer and on my work computer, I'm like, you know, I can never find exactly what I'm looking for. Uh, it's like the fifth page. Yeah.
It is, it is.
It says Mountain View Elementary Faculty and Staff, 2023 to 2024.
And it has all the teachers, the, the ESP, mystery of assistance, room numbers, everything.
I just forwarded it to you, Ben, just in case you got left off email earlier, or I didn't clear it or something.
Okay, I am opening it. Ah, yes, I see it. Oh, my God, look at that. Beautiful, amazing. Um, that's really great. That's super helpful, because I, because what I was looking at before was a little confusing, because it, it was sort of directing people to the website, and, and our, our website is not easy. And I actually tried to just go, okay, like, let me find my, my, my kid's teacher, and it was like, nothing. And there was, it mentioned that there were some teacher websites. Maybe, I don't know if that's still here. Maybe the language is different. But those, those sites were out of date mostly or not working, so I just wanted to sort of think, like, there's been a longstanding kind of issue with the EPSD website, and, uh, the information there is, is tricky, and I hear all the time, parents can't find anything they're looking for. So it's just, uh, I wanted to make sure that if the handbook is directing people to the, to the website, that it's very specific and extremely clear about where they're going. Um, that was one question that I had. Um, the other one was about.
The way that I, I apologize, um, the form image it was sent to you, um, the other day, so I apologize. I sent it. It's just, or things were moving all over the place when I was trying, so I apologize for that. This is, this is much, much clearer.
No, that's right. Um, uh, I'm just quickly scanning this, this.
You have another question?
Yeah, I did. I had one more, one more. Um, actually, I had two different things, but I'll just, the one, one other one I was concerned about was, um, bus policy, policies, um, and there is a specific mention a couple of times about how kids should not be filming other people, or phones should not be used for filming, which I think is absolutely a hundred percent right on. But I also would love to have a serious discussion about banning phones entirely from the bus, that they should not be taken out for any reason at all. Um, there is a sentence, or there was a sentence at least, that said that school rules apply on the buses, um, and it says that, for the middle school at least, under, under cell phones, or it did, it said that, um, uh, you know, you're never supposed to have, you're never supposed to have your phone out at school, and I really think that needs to be said for the buses, because the stories that were coming out of the buses, it was like, welcome to the jungle twenty-four seven on those buses all year long. It was very stressful for a lot of kids. I heard multiple parents telling me that their kids weren't even riding the buses anymore, because it was just too much pressure. It was too intense. Um, I heard stories about kids looking, full access to the internet on their smartphones, looking at things that were truly reprehensible and not appropriate. So I would seriously love, love to push this if, if we can do it, because it is, there is no reason for it. It doesn't, you can have your phone, but just you can't take it out. And I don't know how you, you enforce that, because I know that we don't.
Yeah, I would, um, you know, I, I would love, I would love to, um, to have that rule written in here too, Ben. I'm not sure how we would enforce it. I, I, um, you know, I'm thinking about students. Um, it's, it's, um, oftentimes a noisy, um, situation going home. Some of our students listen to music. Some of our students are communicating with their parents, um, to, um, meet them at the bus stop and so forth. Um, I think that we can get a little bit more specific about what is acceptable use on the bus. But, um, our team was feeling as though, um, it was important around the filming, um, situation. And later on, um, when we do talk about cell phones in this, it, it does talk about going on, you know, going on websites that are not appropriate and so forth, and, and school rules would still continue to, um, apply in that. I, I think it would be very difficult to enforce, um, especially at the middle school level. I mean, as soon as the, um, the dismissal bell goes, goes off, all the phones come out. And, um, I, I think that we would, um, be spending a lot of time disciplining students for, um, having phones on the bus. I, I, I don't know. I mean, I'm certainly open for the discussion. It just seems like, um, it would be a, it would be a pretty difficult task.
For sure. I, I realize that this is a true can of worms. Like, it's not, there's no simple solution to this. Um, but I, I mean, specifically, I'm talking about elementary kids, like, and, and not that you can enforce that easier with, with those kids, but, um, on, under the bus expectations, it says number six, filming or recording others is prohibited. I mean, I don't know if it just said like, keep your cellphone put away. I don't know if that's, if it's that simple or what, but, um, no, I've seen heads going, nope, but you can tell me why, uh, I, I just worry that it's, it's contributing to some serious negativity, um, in that, in that zone, and I could tell you more about that.
Okay, I have thoughts, but Laura's, Laura's next.
Um, yeah, I think, thanks, Cindy. I think, um, I think we need to have a larger conversation that is placed on the agenda, giving parents and families plenty of time to weigh in about all things to do with our bus policy, conduct on buses. And my view, Ben, personally, and it doesn't represent anyone else in the committee at this point, would be that we probably need to look at some sort of funding or grant money for bus monitors, because I think it's irresponsible to write policies that we're not equipped to enforce. I agree with you that I think there's issues, but I think we need to look at a broader, known, like knee jerk, reflexive rules we can't enforce. We need to look at like changing the environment on the buses and several other things simultaneously. So I think we should make that a focus moving forward, but we've gotta, you know, be more broad based, invite more voices, figure out all the problems that are there, and then figure out what it's gonna cost to find a solution.
A hundred percent. I can get, I can get with that. Um, yeah, doesn't happen tonight. I just, it's, it's that thing of like, this is a conversation. This is one of those big things that came out of last year that I think like, to not touch on this and try to wrestle with it, we, like, feels irresponsible.
Right. Sam?
I just want to say, I agree with Laura. I think we should just kind of, I think we should leave it as is for now. But, um, me, Laura, and Ben are the policy subcommittee, so this would actually be something that I think we should take up. I'm gonna look and see what, if anybody hears about other districts handling this differently, I'd love to, um, get those perspectives, but I'm gonna look around and see if I can find any other policies, um, that have been effective. Because I do, I do hear both that this is a major concern, and also, um, just speaking for myself, I was a kid who like listened to my tapes on the bus on the way to school, and I have no idea like how you would do that without having a phone. Actually, I was, I was challenged with this recently, because I was trying to figure out a way for my son to listen to music without having his iPad, and also without having a phone, and, um, it's really, really hard to find alternative, um, music players now that don't look like phones or our phones. So, um, yeah, I'd like to look more into this. I'm gonna do some research, and we should, uh, have a policy subcommittee meeting. And then I, I like the idea of inviting the community to, um, contribute as well.
Folks, I was just looking, um, I, I saw a headline, um, at, at the conclusion of the day today. Another district, um, it might be Holyoke, um, was adopting yonder pouches, um, which are the pouches that seal the phones in during the day. Um, I would like to know what they're doing with yonder pouches, um, at dismissal, after dismissal takes place, and how they handle buses. Um, it, it was just a headline, um, as I was, as I was leaving work this afternoon.
And actually, oh, sorry, to new.
No, that's okay. My sense is that unless you have, um, monitors on the bus, it's almost impossible to do that. Um, when kids leave school and they get on the bus, they are calling their parents, and there are parents who are going to want a phone call, so those phones are gonna be out. Uh, I think that as you, I, I love the idea of meeting and talking about it in policy, and I think as you do that, um, you know, the cellphone policy and appropriate use of the cellphone, I think is your best bet for controlling that situation, because you are still on a school bus. Um, so the handbook and the behavior that you expect, you know, um, should apply however school is over. But it's like on a field trip, you know, you might, you might, you have your phone out on a field trip, you're still expected to behave a certain way. So I think you can cover all that, um, you know, when you meet in policy. I like the ideas that are coming out, you know, but without bodies, I agree, you can't, you can't, you can't enforce that.
Yeah, actually, under, under, uh, bus expectations, the first sentence says, "School rules extend to buses and bus stops."
Correct.
That feels like a pretty open ended sentence. I don't know.
Sure, I like, we, with the expectations for drivers is already sky high, and music's hard enough to hire and retain those folks. Like, that's, we've hit that limit. We need to now look at some, you know, layer on some additional.
I don't know. Those people need to drive the bus.
Exactly, exactly.
Um, wait, I had, I had one more quick one. I was noticing, uh, the academic honesty section. Um, I don't know if this is really on our radar at the K through eight level, but the AI conversation is gigantic and enormous and, and existentially troubling at the college level. And I think that we should at least be considering drafting some language around what, uh, plagiarism means when we're talking about using, uh, these AI, these large language model machine things that can literally just in eight seconds do your homework for you. Um, there's really, uh, no stopping these things. They exist for free in many different incantations, or they're available all over the place, and they are virtually undetectable. So, um, academic honesty is a great concept, something I'll really be thinking about, but what does it mean when, you know, you can say, like, write me an essay on Benjamin Franklin, you know, and you have it instantly? Um, is there a way to talk about that? Is there a way to prepare students for that? Is there a way to harness AI's power? I, I don't know. There's a lot of questions there that we should probably be tackling, uh, uh, sooner than later, because it's already, it's already a problem. We're already getting, at HCC, we're already getting like robot essays, like, they're flooding in, uh, and we have no idea what to do. It's pretty bad. So, that's all, that's the last thought I had.
Um, Laura, did you raise your hand again? Okay.
I did. Um, Ben, my notes were for policy SC, and it said, "Bus attendance slash tardiness and academic honesty." Um, yeah, and I think just to give you a ray of hope, my initial thinking kind of revolves around, um, my, especially for K through eight, I think the high school is trick here, but for K through eight, maybe we talk about continued revision of restricting homework and having less to do at home and more to do in the classroom, which eliminates opportunity. And but, um, again, I think this is a great topic, and we break them up into bite sized pieces, and we publicize it, and we invite people to contribute. We start in policy and we move it up to a full meeting.
That's a beautiful idea. I, I think about this a lot. What you're describing it to, for me, is like the flipped classroom, where you, you do your homework in class, basically. Uh, I, I love, I love the idea of talking about that more. That sounds good.
Any, anything else? Anybody else? Megan?
Um, yeah, so I just wanted to, it, it was good timing that it, it came in with this email we received, um, about the absences, excused absences situation. Um, and I don't, I think that's probably not relevant for like approving the handbook, but because it's in the handbook as well, it seems like we could bring it up, and it, I think it's probably, I don't know if it's, um, one that we wanna like invite, um, discussion around, but I think it requires more explanation. So we got a really great email from our district, um, uh, MD, who informed us, um, and kind of like highlighted that, um, our excused absences policy requires, um, a note from a physician, which is not something that the local pediatricians do, and it looks like Dr. Beninda might have something that's relevant to say, so I'll stop rattling on about it and just let you say something that might be relevant.
All right, great. So we actually solved that already, and it was mostly the secondary, uh, that was the concern. So if you hadn't, um, read that email yet, uh, it, it consists that the physician for the district, uh, who had advocated with other pediatricians, uh, not to write blanket excuse absences, and that had been that what happening, uh, was getting some requests for students that were dismissed and were sick by the school nurse. And what was happening is they were saying that even though the school nurse recognized they were indeed sick and had dismissed them, that schools are requiring them to still go to their doctor and get a note. So, uh, so that's no longer gonna happen. So if a school nurse, uh, sees that the child is sick and dismisses them, that would be an excused absence. The confusion was that there were students who the nurse did not feel was sick, uh, and the parents still dismissed them, and that's where the, the confusion came. But indeed, if the child is definitely sick and excused by the nurse, that will be excused absence from now on.
Okay, and what about, um, like if a child is sick and the parent calls in the morning, they leave a message on the line, so and so is sick today and not coming in, does that, do they need to get a note?
Yes, that would still be a note, because this was about the nurse. Specifically, the request from the physician was, if the nurse is recognizing they are sick and dismissed them, why do they have to have a doctor's note then, to be excused?
That one seems like a no brainer, for sure.
Yes.
That's their job. They can determine who's sick. But I think my understanding of it, and then I wrote back to, um, the physician, and then checked in with, um, a few of the first nurses that I know in the district, to kind of see what was happening. And so, yes, they confirmed for me, all of those people confirmed for me that, um, so like, it's not been a problem yet for me, because my oldest is just entering sixth grade. I call, I say on the voicemail line, he's sick and he's not coming in, and that's where it ends. But when you get to high school, that starts to really matter, and you can get held after school and not, um, you know, have to make up time and not be able to pass your classes if you are sick, and nine days, so it's nine days. Um, and we, on the other hand, and I feel like I'm on this end of things, where we're saying like, if you're sick, if you're in question, don't come to school, don't bring things to school. Kids are, you know, sicker for longer. We're encouraging them to stay home. So we're like giving them in this, the nurses told me that some kids are saying things, like who are genuinely sick, but who have a cold or something, that the doctors aren't gonna see them. They have to take up a slot at the pediatrician for like a sick visit if they just have a colds, but they really shouldn't be in school, and they're saying, I can't miss another day. It's like, I don't know. I don't know if there's any solution for something like that. I don't know that it's a, a discussion we have around the handbook, but, um, I'm really glad to hear the nurse situation hasn't straightened out. Can we fix that language in the handbook before it's printed?
So actually, it wasn't actually in the handbook. It was a procedure.
Okay, I see.
Actually happening in the high school, so.
Gotcha.
So that has been rectified, and I will go forward with that. As far as, uh, so the policy of the high school is that you get credit, right? And if you miss so many absences, then you don't, you have to buy back that credit over so many. But there are a lot of absences that you, there's a, they're, they're explaining to me that, um, you could have up to, you know, ten absences, uh, per semester, and, and those are still excused. So I, I think there seems to be a lot of absences that you can have, that you don't need the doctor's note. So every time you're out, you don't necessarily have to get a doctor's note, but there are those that are over and exceeding that. Once you get so many absences and you're out again, those people would start to have to get a doctor's note, because they're really exceeding the number of absences that are in the high school, very allowable.
Gotcha. Okay, so if I'm understanding, I just want to repeat back just to make sure I'm understanding. And I just went and scrolled through to see, so it's on page, um, I don't know what page is, page eight, maybe? There is the attendance policy listed there, and it does have this language around, um, there has to be a note from the physician for it to be an excused absence. Um, and then in that last paragraph, it is saying that if you have these days that you're not there, seven, or fourteen, or ten, or whatever it is, that, you know, that's too many, and we're starting to talk about the truancy and the credit situation. But you're saying that if, if some part, some of those days are excused, then that actually doesn't, like, the excused days don't add towards that total?
So what I'm saying is that you already, you already have up to a certain number of days that doesn't affect your credits.
Right.
Right? So if you use those, you don't use all those days, then you don't have to worry about the doctor note part of it, because you have so many days that you can have before it starts to affect your credit in the high school.
Okay.
And there was not. Let's say you had four absences, because one day your allergies were bothering you, another day you had a headache, but you didn't go to the doctor, and then you get slammed with the flu, and you're out for six days. You get the doctor's note for that. Those six days don't count. Those are excused. And that's how school, um, just about every school I know works. Those are all excused. So if you're starting to rack them up, and it was important that your students stayed home, then you just get that note from the doctor.
Okay, I think I'm following. I'm, I see two other hands. I'm gonna let these guys go, and then I'll see if I have any other thoughts.
Sam?
I just, so that is all, um, very helpful, a little bit also to the Mountain View Handbook in particular, but I think it's an important conversation. That one question I had about that is that if you have like some kind of chronic condition that is causing you to miss days, like if you have chronic migraines or, or something like that, if you have a doctor's note regarding that condition, similar to how you would do for work for FMLA, then you wouldn't necessarily need to get a new note every time.
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Laura?
Um, yeah, and just to add a layer of clarity for Megan, because the high school works differently, so it's not necessarily a day, right? It's talking about an absence from a class. So let's say there's a, a student that is leaving early very often or coming in late very often. They're missing the same, they don't have that many absences, but they're missing one class. Once it starts to approach that nine or ten of that class missed without excuse, that's when you start to get into the danger zone of possibly needing makeup work and other conversations. Just to clarify, because it, that doesn't apply in the other grade levels, right? It's different in high school.
That's right.
I was gonna say, we should invite parents to like think about their own company's kind of sick policies and, but then I realized that a lot of people don't have sick leave from their job, so it's harder to relate to when you don't have that, so.
Anybody else? Um, Miren?
Well, I, I mean, not to harp on this thing, but I, I do think, though, the language here in, we've been talking about the high school, but in the Mountain View Handbook, it is talking about these numbers and incompletes and truancy and a note from the physician to be excused. Like, I do think it says it here in a way that is not what you were talking about for this grade level. So I, I think there is, um, the language that is written here, uh, is speaking to students who are in elementary and middle school and is not in alignment with what you're just saying.
May, may I try to give an example? Um, um, Superintendent Beninda?
Yes.
So, so this has to do, you, you are allowed a certain number of absences for being sick or for other reasons. Um, I think that it is the way, we're talking about the way that it is coded in our attendance system. So for example, I may have a parent who makes a phone call to the school that they are taking their child out of school to go to the Biggie. That's not an excused absence. That's not an excused absence. In order to excuse the absence, to make it actually excused from an A for absent to an E for excused, um, we would need a note from a doctor to excuse it and then we would change it in that way. That doesn't mean you can um never stay out of school. You might need to stay out of school and um because your child has a cold or a sore throat and you call in your child. That doesn't mean that um that that all absences are going to be E's. You may have some As in there as well. I think when it becomes uh problematic is for excessive absences. Um, and going back to what Sam said, for chronic conditions such as migraines or other um reasons that doctors um write notes over longer periods of time, similarly to um, you know, when when we have employees that have F M L A for that reason, um, we take into account excused absences for those reasons as well.
Okay.
I feel I I feel bad not showing my face. I'm trying, I'm really not being
No, please, it's okay. So I I do think, though, that based on what was being spoken to before around that the the nurse sends somebody home, that that is an excused absence. That's not, like, for instance, that's not the way it's written here, right? This says that it has to be a note from the physician. So um
The the nurse would be, the nurse is considered the healthcare provider in that sense. So if a student, so another example, um, if a student is dismissed from school at one o'clock in the afternoon with a fever, that student won't, they can't return um to school within the next twenty-four hours after being fever free. Um, so the the dismissal would be excused by the nurse, the medical professional on site, as well as the next day, that absence would be excused because that was the what was the recommendation of the school nurse. So that absence would be excused as well. A a parent would not be expected necessarily to um set up a doctor's appointment. I mean, they might do it anyway. Um, but they would not be expected and the absence would still be excused.
Right. So I mean, and I, those of us who have kids that have gone through these levels, that we understand, I understand that, but that's still not what's written here, right? That that's the issue. It's not, it's not that there's a, the 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 actual policy enactment has more variance. But when you in, you've written it here as that the only excused notices is a student brings a note from a physician. So if this is the handbook that's going to tell parents what they need to do to make sure that their students are having only excused absences versus an absent absence, then the language here does not clarify it for them. It actually restricts it more than is truthful. Right? So we're just, I just think it's I think it needs to be updated. That's all. I think if we're all, we are in agreement. We're not having any problems with this. We just that the words here don't properly reflect what was just said, and that's what it needs to do. If this is the handbook for me as a parent with a middle schooler, I need that language in here that the nurse practitioner or whatever, you know, whatever label we want to put on her has provided an excused absence, then that's what needs to be written here.
So I think what you're talking about and and then it'll be Superintendent um Benenda and then Megan. I think what you're asking for, Miren, is just a simple addition of words like uh excuse would be student is released by the school nurse or um brings a note from the physician. And that way, it's immediate that um if they've been released, that's an excused absence. I think that's a simple fix. Um, Superintendent Benenda?
Yes, I I I think Jill, do we have time still to put our school nurse on that? Oh. Can you hear me?
Um, so on that page in the section on attendance, um, so there are three categories, excused, absent, absent, and unexcused. Um, excused can be, it it's very simple to add on to that. Student brings a note from physician or is excused by the school nurse. And that may, that may solve the problem.
Perfect. So Megan, I'm guessing that that is where you were raising your hand also, so that we're just talking about a couple of words.
I agree. If we could just slide those words in, how you phrased it before, that's perfect.
Awesome.
It's clear then.
Great. Anything else? Miren?
I would just recommend going through it one more time. I, you know, this little edits, things like uh on a few pages later, there's a section that's called walking, bikes, scooters, skateboards to school with a whole bunch of rules. That's really just for bicycles, scoot, scooters and skateboards, because there's another section below that's for walking. So I just think, and there's some other spots too, where there's just one more look through for edits would be a good thing. Because there's different sections for walking than the walking, biking, scooter section. So.
Are you saying people should look right now?
No, I think that I I think that we can, I don't think, nothing else that I have seen has been so glaring that we can't approve it now. But I think that one more walkthrough of edits, just to make sure that it's all the right words and all the right meanings, uh, you know, and section title um uh highlights and and uh, you know, headers and things like that are all exactly accurate. That I just think would be worth one more walkthrough. That's all.
But not by us. We can approve it tonight, is what you're saying. Good. Okay. Are there any other issues or concerns? And uh, Ben?
I don't know if this is really anything. I I I, the uh, the section entitled um uh homeschool partnership number four, since the remind app. It just, to me, I I like, I've had teachers, my son's teachers use it and some of them don't use it. This makes it seem like it's, you know, the go to program for the school. Um, I I it confused me a little bit. I think the paragraph beneath it is pretty clear. Maybe just number four should just be that paragraph. These are just an example of what Maren was just talking about, just like these little kind of clarity moments um to take a second look would be great.
And and I have one more too, back to the the cell phone piece too. Um, the the language that's written here, it says, cell phones must be turned off and in lockers, backpacks during schools. I would assume a student probably has their backpack on their back. So the next sentence that says students should should not have their cell phones on their person at any time of the building, that that starts to become a little bit of a, you know, how this, I just would suggest looking at that and tightening that up again a little bit more if they're
I I I can explain that. Um, the reason for that is because um we're talking about the elementary school and they don't have lockers.
Then I might, then I might suggest differentiating about that. If there's different rules for different levels, then I would clarify that again so that students are understanding and the parents are understanding what rule is specific to their grade level.
Okay.
Because if a if a middle schooler can't have it in their backpack, this would say that I could. And then I would be getting in trouble for something that I'm not actually breaking the rule on. So um, yeah, if you could just tighten that up and and differentiate on things that anything that needs to be differentiated between grade level, I think we need to take the time to differentiate them.
Megan?
I just had a quick question. Um, so I was looking through and I saw the P T O section. Is there, my understanding is that the P T O right now really just covers grades up to five, four, five? Um, and this is in the general section, I believe. So I just wondered, is it is that like a indication that maybe the P T O will be going up through eighth grade? Is that possible? Does it require approval? It just made me wonder.
The P T O is um all grade levels pre K to eight.
Yeah.
Oh, great.
I wrote that charter, Megan. It's case, it's pre K through eight with the understanding that we were gonna have a campus one day. Yeah, I don't know that they do as many or have as many middle school age parents, but the five, the five oh three C or whatever is written for that is written for K through eight.
I think they're in, under the impression that they need to get that approved to go up to eighth grade. So I will, I will let them know that they can watch this meeting and see that a hundred percent they are up to eighth grade. Okay, thank you.
I I I think I I was at a meeting um uh just this this week with the P T O um Wednesday night and um, no, they are they are really excited about being involved in the middle school level. Um, they're just looking for ways to um engage um more um caregivers and getting involved. So I mean, they're 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 perfectly aware.
And then Sam?
Okay, I don't want to open a can of worms, so we can, we might need to shelve this one, but uh, we don't have any policies on smart watches uh at this time, do we? It only applies to cell phones? Sorry, Maureen.
Um, put that on the list for policies in the committee.
Yeah, that's a good question. Uh, because certainly smart watches, like when you give, when you give the M cast, they can't have smart watches, right, on them either?
And there are things you can do, like I, and I only say this because I've done a lot of research for my own kid recently, but like there are a number of limitations to smart watches that make them more um it 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 kind of a better choice at certain levels, which I think will, we we have seen them on younger kids and we will continue to see them on younger kids. Um, like it's easier to limit how many people they can contact and they can't take pictures with them and you can put music on them, but they can't access the internet uh as easily. So, you know, like there, it's just one of those things where we might need to um we will talk about it in policy and I would like to hear from Jill and from others at the schools, you know, kind of how they're being used, if they're a problem or if, you know, because as we're talking with parents, if parents are, I hear from a lot of parents that they don't want cell phones banned specifically because they want a way for their child to contact them. Um, and this is dark, but specifically in the event of violence at school, and it's very hard to to tell somebody that who's concerned about that, that like, nope, that's not going to be a problem and your kid should keep their cellphone in their locker. So I would love to be able to say, you know, we we don't, you know, we don't allow cell phones to be used, but here are some models of smart watches you can look into that have the same functionality that's going to be safer for your kid and for your uh for their classmates. So I'd be interested to hear if you guys have time at any point, that if you hear from anybody how how smart watches are going. Um, you know, or maybe they're just as problematic and I don't know that. So.
Okay, so that's something you you can look at in policy later. Are there any other issues tonight before we take a vote? Would someone like to make a motion to accept the Mountain View handbook? Laura?
Move to approve the Mountain View handbook for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year as written.
With the clarity around dismissal by school nurses.
Great. You're the one taking notes, Megan, so you put that clarity down.
Great, great. Um, seconded.
All right, so it's seconded. Any other discussion before we vote? All right, Mayor LaChapelle?
Mayor LaChapelle, yes.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, yes.
Sam?
Sam Hunter, yes.
Laura?
Laura Scott, yes.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, yes.
Miren?
Miren Goldstein, yes.
And Cindy Kuzinski, yes. Great. Okay. Next item on our agenda is the Director of Special Education appointments.
Okay, so we are really happy uh to announce to you tonight that Intigene Lively, uh who is a special education teacher uh right in East Hampton, uh has uh accepted to be the new special education director. Uh, she has a uh doctorate uh in education, in supervision and leadership from the American International College. She has a Masters of Education uh in special education from Westfield State College and also a Bachelor of Arts in comparative literature and English from the University of Massachusetts Amherst. Uh, some of the comments when Intigene uh went through the interview that uh made its decision are very easy for us. Uh, was that she's also been the five oh four coordinator. She has been uh eight years in East Hampton, a total of eighteen years as a special education teacher, about twenty years in education. And uh she is dedicated to the East Hampton community. She said she always puts students first. Uh, she said she's a very good listener. She likes to reach all uh stakeholders. She is open minded, takes feedback, uh has extreme patience. Uh, her parents and uh students trust her opinion, which is a very important part. And uh she also has experience with K, pre K to twelve population, which is very important for a special education director. Um, she knows what resources are needed, support students both at home and in school. She believes in a lot of community outreach. Uh, she maintains high standards for herself. So I did ask her to join us. I did see her that she was on here earlier. Uh, she's here. Here, so I really would like uh Intigene to come on so you can also meet her.
Well, hello everyone.
Hi.
Thank you so much for that really warm welcome, Superintendent Benenda. I am really honored and flattered that you just listed all of those qualities of me. Thank you. Um, and I'm really happy to be here on a Friday evening. Thank you all, school community, chairperson, mayor, everyone. Um, it's not easy to do at the end of the summer on a Friday night. So um, I really appreciate all of your time and I'm really excited about continuing to serve you Hampton in this role and uh getting to know everyone better. And the community outreach part was really important to me. Um, I just heard today that CPAC changed to CANDO. Is that correct? So I'm looking forward to working with that organization of our caregivers in the community and um, I'm continuing my path in special education with the city.
Does anybody have any questions?
Congratulations, um, Ms. Lively.
Thank you so much. Thanks, everyone. Really, really excited. Thank you.
So um, we just need to vote to accept this this appointment. So does someone want to make the motion?
Move to approve and Intigene Lively as the new special ed director in East Hampton Public Schools.
And do we have a second?
A second.
All right. Okay, Mayor LaChapelle?
Mayor LaChapelle, yes.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, yes.
Sam?
Sam Hunter, yes, I'm with gratitude.
Laura?
Laura Scott, yes. Nice to see you, Intigene.
Oh, sorry. Was that Maren or Ben?
So Mayor and I heard you, Ben?
Ben is, Ben Hershey's, yes, for sure.
And Cindy Kuzinski, yes, and welcome. It's very nice to have you. We're excited.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Right. Great. So that was our easy meeting. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
I just want to take one other business thing real quick before we do that. So I just, we did just announce the, and since there's a number of people who asked about this, so the next finance subcommittee meeting is going to be Wednesday, September thirteenth. So our next committee, school committee is on the Tuesday, the twelfth. Well, the following Wednesday, we'll have our finance subcommittee on Wednesday, the thirteenth at five P M. And that will be in person upstairs in the conference room, uh, the back door, back room, conference area.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for that announcement. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second? Second. Who's gonna second it? Is that Ben?
Second.
All right. All right. So Mayor LaChapelle?
Aye.
All right, Miren?
Miren Goldstein, aye.
Laura?
Laura Scott, aye.
Sam?
Sam Hunter, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, good night.
And Cindy Kuzinski, aye. Good night, everybody. Have a wonderful weekend.